It is Tuesday, the 14th. It wasn't supposed to be when you heard this program. It was supposed to be Monday, the 13th. But because I am capable of moments of pure, unadulterated, true genius, I, your host of the Town Meeting Program, programmed the wrong date for this program and the program was improperly programmed. But here we are recovering from that on Tuesday. The Town Meeting Talk Show featuring Kathy Renfelt of the Cordova Chamber of Commerce, who's going to talk about the upcoming gala, full and complete details, because it's always what we get from Kathy is full and complete details. And we'll actually cover some other ground too, on the major projects the Chamber is trying to bring into reality and how you can be involved and benefit and how all of us benefit. Show's brought to you as always by Cordova Wireless Communications, your local provider of cell phones and wireless data. And that provider provides your local talk show. So we can do things like this. And a reminder quick, if you hear anything in the program that you think someone else should hear and maybe didn't have an opportunity to, the show will go into our archive, which takes the form of a YouTube channel. So it's easy to access for anyone with pretty much any device. Youtube.com/CordovaTV. So let's begin. Kathy Renfelt of the Cordova Chamber of Commerce, our guest on Town Meeting. All right, Kathy, let's dive in. A gala, that sounds, that sounds vigorous and very interesting. So tell us about the vigor and interest.
Yeah, so this is the first time that the Chamber has ever put on a gala, 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 however you want to say it. And we're excited because this is an opportunity to celebrate all of the amazing stuff that's happening in Cordova's thriving and growing business community. And we're getting questions like, why are you putting on the gala? What is, what's it gonna be like? Why should we attend? And then, you know, we're also hearing from folks barriers that might be keeping them from attending and trying to address them. So yeah, first off, what is the gala and why should you attend? So this is gonna be an evening of fun and connection. And it's happening on November 18th, which is a Saturday. And it's the Saturday before Thanksgiving and after surprise celebration. And it is going to be at the Cordova Center from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The evening is going to include a guest chef, who's gonna be putting together an amazing menu that really showcases iconic local flavors. We are excited to feature Chef George Fetter. If any of you have eaten some of the amazing meals at Work Adventure Lodge this season, then you've gotten to sample his fare. And I myself have been lucky enough to be out there for a meal and it was amazing. He has a real great history and path that has led him through Michelin star restaurants to Cordova to be here in this town. And he's excited to be part of our gala and to support this event. He is excited to really focus on hyper local ingredients and put together a menu that really shines with all the things that makes Cordova so special. So that's gonna be one part of the evening. We're also going to be giving away our annual business awards. So this is a really exciting opportunity to honor some businesses and celebrate them. And as a previous recipient of one of our business awards, JR, I hopefully you can speak to how that has been helpful and exciting for you as a business owner to be recognized. We all know that it's hard to run a business, to own a business, especially in a place like Cordova. And so we are excited at every opportunity that we have to really support and encourage and honor people who are putting in that time and effort and obviously care about this place enough to provide those services that this town needs. So we'll be honoring five businesses with awards in categories like Chamber Champion and Business Excellence, Community Outreach and an Innovation Award. And then we'll also be acknowledging some honorable mentions in each category as well. So we're excited to bring that out. And we're working with some local entities, local businesses, to actually create the award plaques this year that we've never done that before. So that's exciting. And so that's gonna be another part of the evening. We're also gonna have a live auction, which is always fun and a great opportunity to get your hands on something really special. We are still accepting donations for items to be auctioned off. And if you do, if you do donate an item of $250 or more value, then you can get a free ticket to the gala. So we're still putting that together and adding more items to that every day. But some of those things include two round trip tickets, anywhere Alaska Airlines flies, and some amazing local artwork. And also some excursions, like a glacier tour of Mir's Glacier by boat from Stan Stevens Cruises and some other items. So please let us know if you want to donate something for that. Folks can get to that through our website at cordovachamber.com/gala, and that's also where they can go to buy tickets. So this year, this is our first time doing it. And one of the other aims, so there's a couple aims of this event. One of them is we are trying to fundraise for the Chamber. We have some really exciting new programs. They're really future focused, working to encourage blue economy collaboration between the many different industries and businesses that share the resource of the ocean. And also some regenerative economic development and tourism programs that we're putting on. And then some really cool business support programs, like the Business Empowerment Classes that we've been offering and other events like that. And none of those events have their own like solid funding source established. We, as you know, we get great funding and support through Chamber member businesses that pay for a membership every year. We also get some funding from the city of Cordova. And we have our business sponsors and other forms of revenue like that. But those are all, you know, limited in their amounts. And this is an opportunity for us to kind of get creative and see if we could provide a really fun night for everyone and also come out of it with some funds that the Chamber can then use to expand those programs.
Sure. Well, and, and maybe in a little bit, we can, we can touch, you know, do kind of Cliff Notes on, on some of those points. Because you, you mentioned a number of really valuable things. But again, in terms of how the night actually goes, you talked about some of the highlights, but how does, what's the schedule? Is there like a, a social portion and then the dinner at a certain time? And then how's, what's the agenda for the evening sort of?
Yeah, so, well, one thing I haven't mentioned yet. First off, I want to mention that we, we realized that there is a real limitation for childcare and babysitters in Cordova. Especially that weekend, there's a lot of the regular school aged babysitters are gonna be out of town traveling for sports and activities. And so we wanted to address that head on. And we reached out to Cordova Junior Girl Scout Troop 148. And they are excited to offer a childcare offering right there in the Cordova Center that evening. So there's a suggested donation of $20 per kid, which is super duper reasonable for babysitting for those three hours. Yeah. And they're gonna do things like do art projects and maybe show a movie and have hands-on entertainment and cool activities for your kids to do. You can bring your kids with you to the gala, drop them off in the education room upstairs, go on downstairs, enjoy your evening, not have to worry about them. And then when you're ready to go, and we're done at nine, and you can go up and grab your kids and be envied done. So that's really exciting. There is something happening before 6:00 PM. If you, if folks are available, starting at 4:00 PM, we actually have a little gala pre-party that we're putting on called the Blue Economy Social. And that's gonna be right next door to the Cordova Center at the Pioneer Eglue. And the idea there is that we have a couple specific partners that are working with us to put that on. And it, we are working with the Alaska Blue Economy Center, which is part of the University of Alaska Fairbanks. And they're going to be, you know, have folks on site right there to help you understand what is the blue economy, provide some kind of fun opportunities to learn more about it. And we'll have some food, let some light micro tastings there because we don't want to ruin your appetite for the gala. And then Edible Alaska is our other partner in that event. And they're helping us put together some hyper local cocktails and mocktails that'll be served at that event. And so, yeah, they'll just, that'll be happening, starting at 4:00 PM at the Pioneer. And then folks can trans, can, you know, stay there for however long they want. They can stay right up until six if they want, and then just head straight over to the gala, or they can just pop in, check it out, and then go back and change or whatever, and then come to the, to the gala. There is a separate cost for that micro tasting and that goes directly towards supporting our blue economy programs that we do. And locals can get that just for 20 bucks with the local discount. And like I said, that includes cocktails and mocktails and micro tastings and education and some cool, fun kind of networking opportunities there. And then the main event starts at 6:00 PM at the Cordova Center. And we're gonna start the event with just a kind of a social hour at the beginning from about, starting at about 6:00 PM. And then from there, we're going to have a dinner as well. And then we'll have awards following that and then the live auction. And yeah, that'll be, that'll, we'll have everything wrapped up by 9:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I'll be right at the Cordova Center.
All right. And great place to have it, of course, which is why everybody that was in favor of it wanted it, to, to be able to do events like this and have them be as nice as I expect this one will, will be. And what is, you mentioned the, the $20 charge for the pre-event. What, what is the charge just for people who are budgeting for the main event?
Sure. So the main event for the local pricing, that is $45 for the, for the tickets if you're a Chamber member. And if you're not a Chamber member, then it is $60. And that is for, you know, individual tickets, you know, a single person ticket. We also have a deal if you are a, a couple or you want to buy two tickets together and you're a Chamber member, then you can get that instead of $45 each, you get two for 80.
Okay.
Yeah, so you don't, you do not have to be a member of the Chamber. You don't even have to be a business owner or a business person to attend this event. I think that's a common misconception about this. If you, I know you're familiar, JR, with a lot of the programs and the mission of the Chamber. But I think in a lot of ways, most people are familiar, but maybe they don't think of it this way, that a lot of the work that the Chamber does is really focused on quality of life for residents. And that's one of the reasons I think it's exciting to provide an event where we are celebrating the work that the Chamber does, celebrating this strong, thriving business community that supports everyone in Cordova. And we're celebrating the fact that all of this helps our quality of life and that every, everyone in town benefits from this.
Right.
You know, business owners and are able to contribute to the, the Chamber's work through memberships. But the average person who's not a Chamber member might not know of any, of any opportunity or way to support the work that we do that benefits everyone. And think of all the festivals and events that we do, the economic development that we do, all the different statewide and region wide committees and task forces that we participate in that, that deal with things like, you know, workforce development and childcare issues and the support that we give to the, to the efforts to expand fisheries and maintain access to the marine highway systems. All of this is work that really benefits all of Cordova. And so we're excited to provide an opportunity for everyone to learn more about it, to be excited about it, to support it. And just by buying a ticket to the event, boom, you're supporting that work. Really easy and you get a fun night out of it. You get an opportunity to get gussied up if you want to, wear whatever makes you feel great. The theme is toughs, ties and regalia. Toughs meaning extra toughs. So just try to be really inclusive and say, you can get really dressed up if you want to, or you can wear your extra toughs. We don't care, we just want you there. And we think it's gonna be really fun. Another thing that I'm really excited about is that this event, the Cordova Business Gala, is one of the first events that we're putting on where we are really inviting the corporate entities who people know about in Cordova, but maybe don't usually have an opportunity to interact with outside of the local representatives, getting some of those to come visit Cordova and spend some time here in the same room, perhaps at the same table, with local business owners and local individuals and really share information amongst themselves about all the cool stuff happening on the ground floor here in Cordova. So we're excited. Representative Louise Stutz is gonna be in attendance at the event. We're hoping that representatives from Senator Sullivan and Senator Murkowski's office may be in attendance. Corporate folks from Alaska Airlines and FNBA and many other entities that kind of operate and have headquarters outside of Cordova, will be sending folks in for this event as well. So this is exciting because local people, local businesses, they do a lot to support the work that the Chamber does. And this is an opportunity for us to invite these corporate folks in to also support the work happening in Cordova. And there are two different prices for tickets. So there's a locally discounted price and then there's that corporate price. And so those entities are really, by them coming there, also really supporting what's happening here in Cordova through the Chamber's work as well.
Well, that really does provide an interesting opportunity too. Because, I mean, I know from The Times, for example, I've gone to broadcast conventions, that you meet people from some of these larger institutions that would be difficult to access without an event like this. And there can be a lot of mutual inspiration there. You know, you, a visit that you have with somebody, say, from Alaska Airlines could potentially inspire some sort of a change or some sort of a new idea that could end up being a benefit to them and to the community. And they, they never know if they don't get to meet the folks that they serve. So that's, that, I know from personal experience how well that works. And that's, that's neat that you guys would, would add that in. So quite a few entities, it sounds like then, that you, you have coming in.
Yeah, and we're excited too, because in the spirit of regenerative tourism, we want to make sure that as we're inviting these folks to come and visit Cordova, that we're giving them opportunities to really get immersed in what's happening here and support more than just us through this event. So we've recruited some local excursions and immersive activities for folks to do while they're in town visiting Cordova. So for example, one of them is a salmon lunch aboard a commercial fishing vessel. And so this is just a local fishing family that has put this together and is inviting small groups to come onto their vessel, get a tour around, talk about what makes Cordova's sustainable fisheries so amazing and, you know, what are the main reasons that that should be supported? And then they'll get to enjoy, you know, they'll provide some lunch for these people as well. Another example is Cordova Arts is putting on a backstage tour of the North Star Theater, showing off that beautiful space and talking about how Cordova's active art scene helps to keep the community both entertained and involved and mostly dry year round. So that, there's other opportunities as well, but that's just, you know, some examples of the ways that we're really trying to leverage that, those folks coming in while you're here. Let's see the other ways that, that you can benefit the community while you're here.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, I, I can still remember the first time we came down back in, what was it, October of 1992 or something like that? And to actually see it, I mean, when we had our, when we were offered the job, we didn't even know where Cordova was. We had to go to, go to the public library and find a book about Alaska to learn anything about it. And, and it was a terrible night, the first night that we came in raining sideways. But the next day it cleared up and we could actually see it. And, and it really, it really captured us. And so I hope that, you know, that that continues to be the case for guests that, that come in and that that inspiration might lead to some ideas for, for new opportunities. As far as the, I have a couple of questions that are sort of tangential to all of this. But as far as the gala itself, have we covered most of what you, what folks ought to know with it coming up here or are there any other points?
I think that's the, the main points, just that, you know, you can come in your Alaska finest, is what we call it, whatever makes you feel great. And we've even created a little Pinterest board of outfit inspiration that you can, that we've been sharing through our, our channels. That's pretty fun about that. A lot of people love to have an opportunity to, to do that. But again, you can also just come as you are and that's gonna be totally acceptable as well. I mean, this is a commercial fishing town. This is, you know, we, we're as fancy as we want to be. And I think that's a fun part about the event. And yeah, just, we have a lot of great sponsors and supporters that are donating food items and donating auction items and providing sponsorships for this event that are really helping us put it all together. And we're always looking for more of those as well. You know, throughout the year, we put on several events and we've worked hard, especially since COVID, to cut down on how much we ask for donations from businesses for those events. And instead, to provide opportunities for those businesses to, to supply their products and services to the community through our events. And so this is really the only time of the year where we're asking for donations from businesses for an event. And this is an event that is directly supporting some of the most impactful community based programs that really are addressing the big issues of quality of life and how we're going to be moving forward economically and culturally and community wise and environmentally going forward.
Sure. Well, and you know, as usual, with the Chamber under your leadership and with the team that you have, what, what could be just a very basic event blossoms into this, this, with all these different facets and, and, you know, we not only have dinner and we get together, but we visit with the outside people and we get to support the Chamber, which in turn supports a variety of different innovative things that you guys are doing. So I'm not surprised, but I'm still delighted to see this, you know, the magnitude of this. Now, for the benefit of anybody that might not be familiar with some of these, these key projects that you've been working on, what, what, what would be sort of the, the elevator summary of your blue economy work? What is that and what are you guys trying to do to develop that?
Yeah, so this is a program that includes work that is trying to bring together and form more dialogue and communication and collaboration between industries who share the same resource, which in this case is the ocean or the water. And so think about all the different industries. Obviously in Cordova, we're very focused on commercial fishing and that is a really important industry that uses the ocean. There's also a burgeoning mariculture or ocean farming industry in Cordova with kelp and oyster farms that are coming on board and really supporting and in a complimentary way, working with the commercial fishing industry. Another industry that can really work in tandem and in a complimentary way to commercial fishing is regenerative tourism. So that idea of having visitors, really trying to recruit and encourage visitors that want to have a impactful visit to our community, that want to really learn about us when we're here and they want to leave this place better than they found it. And then providing opportunities at every turn for them to do that. Also, there's the shipping industry, there's marine transportation, there is the energy industry, there's telecommunications. There's all types of different industries that utilize, there's artisans that utilize the, the ocean for the work that they're doing and the fresh water. And so we have been putting together different events to bring those people together. We've been working with experts in the field like the Alaska Blue Economy Center. We've been doing startup, different events that support startups, like the Boost Program that we worked with Sandia National Labs to roll out that helps different startups and entrepreneurs that are looking to develop products or services that provide an overall benefit to the community and the ocean health, really pairs them up with experts that can support them and with, you know, trademarked concepts and ideas, intellectual properties that Sandia owns to help push those ideas forward. And then we also have offered collaborative content creation sessions where we send one of our, you know, staff along to document and photograph and video different groups of, of businesses working together. And then that comes out with, with media that everybody then can share for free. There's, those are just some examples of the blue economy work that we're doing. And we're also working to form a blue economy committee through the Chamber so that we can continue to develop programs under that umbrella that are meaningful and useful and, you know, very, make sure that what we're doing is actually helpful and beneficial.
Okay. And then you mentioned also something that has become an increasingly important part of what you do throughout the year and that's these empowerment sessions. So again, a quick summary of what those are and, and then maybe an idea of how they've been going over the last, is it one or two years you've been doing those now or more?
We, so we've done three Business Empowerment summits so far. So we did one in, oh, two in 2022 and one in 2023. And so how we had those structured is we held it as a summit. And so there was in-person classes, but it was a hybrid format. You could also participate virtually and they were recorded. And we really tried to focus on providing realistic resources and actionable advice to business owners and to business people in Cordova. And this includes people who may just be starting, thinking about starting a business and maybe haven't done so yet. But the kind of classes that we provided include, you know, bookkeeping classes, including QuickBooks, business taxes, you know, basics of that, Social Media 101, and then some really targeted workshops on how to create a Instagram reel and how to create a social media content calendar for yourself. We also did some human resources and recruiting and retaining talent in Alaska, risk management. We talked about the regenerative tourism work and explained that and provided opportunities for how to get involved in that. And we have more of these classes planned for the future. And we're gonna switch up the structure of it a little bit. We, the feedback that we got was that it was, you know, there's just like anything in Cordova, it's impossible to find a date where there's no conflicts. Because we are lucky to live in a community that's very active, has a very active social community structure. So we have a lot of events that happen throughout the year. So no matter when you plan something for, there's gonna be something else overlapping it. So instead of having all of the classes mushed together into that one or two days and just doing that twice a year, we're gonna break it up and offer one class at a time, you know, every month or two. And we're gonna pair up that class with our Business Beers Networking Event, which has been really popular. People really like to have an opportunity to sit down and enjoy a beer or non-alcoholic beverage with others who are in the same, you know, situation that they're in, where they can learn from each other. You have a theme usually for each of them. You know, one of them is women in business, one of them is startups, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so having that focus to each one of those networking events has been really positive and we've gotten a great turnout for each of those. And so we're going to be kind of part, coupling that together with the Business Empowerment Class so that hopefully folks can find even more value out of them.
Sure. And will, will that cut down on the amount of in-person gathering for, you know, with the specialists? Is it gonna make more of the content virtual? Or do you think it'll sort of come out the same?
I think it's gonna probably be, well, we've always had it set up where some of the presenters are actually here in person in Cordova. And sometimes the presenters join us virtually for, for the class. So if the presenter is here in person in Cordova, and I think that's, there's probably an even better opportunity for you to have some one-on-one time with that, you know, expert in their field if there's gonna be, you know, a social event attached to it. So that's kind of another, just kind of built in positive to it. But one of the aims that we have with these businesses, this Business Empowerment Series is we are also trying to, we're trying to help businesses and learn more about these topics that are really important to running a business. And then they can, they can get a kind of basic understanding of it and they can feel more empowered to either take this on themselves and, and do more of this in their business. Or if they feel like they're gonna need help, now they have a resource. They have someone who they know is vetted by the Chamber as an entity who knows what they're talking about and that can help them with that. And we try as much as possible to source these experts from the local business community, bring them up from the local business community, give them an opportunity to present and, and help other local businesses. And if they end up getting clients out of that, that's an added benefit for everybody.
Sure. Well, and you, you mentioned with regard to the visitor industry now, Sure. Well, and, and, um, you, you mentioned with regard to the visitor industry now, uh, you mentioned this in the context of some, of blue economy and the empowerment thing. But let's, this, again, in case anybody is, is not familiar with this, this sort of new renewable, you have a better term for it, but, but these, these visitors that are not just coming in to take, but are actually coming in to participate with the community and maybe even leave something as value, of value behind. What are the Cliff Notes on that? And then maybe if you could include an example of, of, uh, that, you know, like a word picture of, of what that actually would look like?
Sure. So, um, the idea of regenerative tourism, I know when I first heard this term, I was like, do we really need another term for this? There's green and then eco and then sustainable and now it's regenerative. But I've come to realize that really, of course, as humans, we're always trying to evolve our understanding and our knowledge of things. And so as we learn more about how to do things in a way that is, is responsible and beneficial to all parts of the system, then it's going to be evolving and we're going to be understanding it better. And a, a new word to explain it can be helpful. So, you know, if you think about, a lot of people are familiar with the term sustainable or sustainability when it comes to, you know, they, that's usually associated with being like environmentally friendly. And the idea is that, you know, you're starting out before you take any action or, or do any kind of business. You're starting out with the resources at a certain level of health and, and vigor. And then you do whatever you're going to do, whether that's, you know, have a business or do an activity. And then after that, you want to make sure that that same resource is at that same level of health and it hasn't deteriorated. So the regenerative tourism is kind of taking that one step farther and saying, let's see if through whatever act that we take, through whatever offering that we create or whatever service that we do or whatever product we create, let's see if we can actually, um, increase the health and vitality of that resource. And by resource, um, we actually broaden the tur- the, the term there when we talk about regenerative tourism, because we're not just talking about the environment anymore. We're also now talking about the health of the community and, um, cultural revitalization. We're talking about the fact that there are certain industries that are inherently regenerative, um, that we can support through this process. So one example I'll give, I think that there is tons of possibility for this with, uh, mariculture businesses and kelp and oyster farmers. This is, like I said, a burgeoning industry and they, um, the people that are out there starting these kelp farms. And, you know, we have a couple that are active right now, but there's about a dozen that are in the pipeline for Cordova that are working through the permitting process right now and should be coming online in the next couple of years. So this is really something that's going to be developing and can be really complimentary to fit the, the commercial fishing industry into the, the businesses that we already have in place in Cordova. Um, so they're putting a lot of their time and money and effort into creating these businesses right now. And they're so far not able to, they don't have a lot, a lot of a market established yet. That's still in the works. Processing is still coming online for these, um, businesses. And so it's, this can be a really helpful supplementary revenue source for those businesses as those markets are getting developed, as processing is getting developed, as we continue to integrate it more with the commercial fishing and aquaculture industries. Um, if they're, if you're a kelp farmer and you also get yourself a six-pack license and, and then you can take folks out, visitors to Cordova, you could take them on a little boat tour, you could do a little kayak trip, or you could just do a little cooking class, um, where you provide these people an immersive experience where they're learning about this sustainable, uh, and, and regenerative industry that has, it's already, you know, just by kelp being in the water, it's processing CO2, it's, they're like forests in the ocean. So they're creating habitat for animals like herring that need it. And, um, so that, that is a way, that's one example. Um, but there's also lots of other examples. The idea of regenerative tourism is we're not trying to create something brand new from scratch. We are looking at what is this place already good at? What is this place already known for? Where, in what ways is this place already thriving? And how can we build on that and provide complimentary offerings so that visitors can support that?
Yeah. Well, I saw actually, uh, there was a really interesting documentary, uh, I want to say on Netflix that I saw, uh, that was on the tourism industry and comparing, first of all, the big massive thousands of people, cruise ships, where everybody just dumps off and goes to a bunch of pre-ranged places and leaves. And the locals are completely left out of it. That was one scenario. There was another one that was sort of an attempt to do this more immersive in-the-culture tourism, but it actually ended up just exploiting, I think the example that they gave was, uh, something to do with orphanages in, in countries like, uh, you know, where the idea was you would bring people in and they would volunteer at, at this orphanage. Uh, but it ended up being something that was actually very devastating with the kids because the, a lot of the people were coming in just to get selfies with the kids and look important. And then they would leave and the, any connection they'd started to form with these little kids was just blah. But then it, the documentary moved on to something more about what you're talking about. Again, ways to, to immerse people in, in the places that they're going, uh, whether it's some place in the Amazon that, that nobody's ever heard of or, or, uh, I don't know, there were a variety of scenarios in there, but, but where the person left with uh, a lot of knowledge and a very enriching experience in their presence, that the fact that they went there and in some cases were helping with something or in some cases just spending time with local people, um, it, the, the place was better off for them having been there as well. Are there some other examples? You, you talked about somebody who maybe is doing a kelp farm, being able to, to take people out and show that to them and maybe the people can help with a little bit or something. Are there some other examples that you can think of, maybe not even necessarily right in Cordova of, of, uh, just, just to create more, to, to, to give more word pictures again of, of how, of ways this, this works and how it's already maybe been successful?
Absolutely. So first of all, just to address some of the stuff that you said at the beginning, um, of what you were talking about. Yeah, there are a lot of communities that are coming up against some negative impacts from tourism in their community. And that is why we are positioned really well in Cordova, um, to get ahead of that. And to say, because like it or not, tourism is expanding very rapidly, especially in Alaska. And, uh, we, if we present our community and our destination as a destination that is built for people who want to leave this place better than they found it, that is built for people who care about their impact as they're traveling. We target our marketing towards those people. We build out offerings within the community that inherently do that good work. Then we are positioning ourselves in a much better place than any of those other communities who didn't have the opportunity, um, to do this before tourism happened to them.
Yeah.
So this is why we're doing this work. Because we are, um, very interested in the wellbeing of this community. And we are very focused on maintaining quality of life in Cordova. And things change, you can't stop change, but one thing that you can do is you try to, you can set up mechanisms and you can line yourself up for success in the ways that matter most to your community.
Sure.
And we did this work very intentionally, um, and we did a lot of stakeholder outreach and a lot of community outreach to ask, what are the most important things about Cordova that make this place special? That we need to guard and, and protect and also celebrate as we move forward. And we came up with five core community values that do that. And through that, we can then help local businesses provide and community groups and nonprofits tailor the work that they're doing, um, the offerings that they're creating, the outreach that they're sending out. We can try to speak with one voice. We're trying to provide lots of resources and tools for this to happen. And it's definitely not going to happen like the flip of a switch or the launch of a campaign. This is something that takes time and we are slowly building it out. We're not trying to rush anything. And, uh, we are here for Cordova in this. We are the entity that is saying, we can do this, we can help you and we're a team.
Well, and you've got a community culture there too, that's been very much in line with that. Every time some sort of big glossy, I mean, I, I remember several times over the years where some company said, hey, we want to come in and do this big giant. And people are like, uh-uh, no, not, not if it changes who we are and how we feel about ourselves and how we feel about the team. So the community has been aware of that and you guys, uh, you know, taking a leader position, leadership position and preserving that obviously is going to be important.
Yeah. Cordova is an, we're full of independent people who have, uh, that really have a lot of pride in this place and they have a strong connection to this place. And they have a strong desire to protect it and preserve it. And we're right in step with that. And that's what we're trying to do through this work. But we're also trying to build frameworks that can protect us in a way where we are still moving forward, um, with this industry that is going to be coming, but that we're doing it in a way that protects us. So, um, the community values that, you know, we came up with as a community through this work, through this regenerative tourism destination strategy was connection is the first one, that we're small and isolated and that affords us a slower pace that allows for genuine connection. And we honestly and genuinely do want to get to know people that come to Cordova. The second one is grit, that we are a hard-working Alaskan community that's built on the backbone of commercial fishing and we're shaped by our perseverance. Our ancestors, that we honor Alaska natives who have lived in this region for centuries and we continue to learn from their wisdom and traditions. And the last two are nature asceticness and reverence of natural systems. So that we are like, we subsist off of the, the resources here. That's how important they are. They're not just a passing glance that we appreciate. These are important for our survival as a community and for our culture. And that we revere them and we have a deep respect for the environment. And that, um, that drives our scientific curiosity and our creative expression. And that this is all, this is who we are as a community and this is what we're going to use to guide us. And this is what we're going to protect as we move forward through this work. So there's lots of, you know, you asked about other examples of regenerative tourism. One really cool thing that we realized as we went through this work is that there are certain things that happen in Cordova that just inherently are doing regenerative tourism without us even having to have tried to do it. This is how much this is like meant to be, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one example is the shorebird festival.
Yeah.
So this is a really cool event that is gaining, uh, worldwide attention and recognition as an excellent example of a community-driven festival. So the people who come to Cordova for this festival, they are, and they are impact-minded. They do care about what they leave behind in a place. You don't often find birders that are throwing their litter and trash on the ground that are just destroying resources. They know that those resources are super important. They care about the birds and the health of the ecosystem around them. And so they're going to be inherently, um, concerned and in spot, about the health of the resources and inspired to protect it. And so then through that event, we really are focusing on, on celebrating, um, those, this natural, um, resource that we have here through the Copper River Delta and the birds and the wetlands and the world's richest waters here. And we're providing these really great opportunities for genuine connection. And we're partnering with all these local businesses and agencies and organizations, you know, the Netloft providing all of their cool art, um, in, events and the Science Center doing their, um, really engaging kids and educational events and the Native Village of EAC doing cultural events and, um, all of those things coming together, um, along with these esteemed speakers and these guided excursions. And we're doing citizen science along the way. We're having everybody download the eBird app, which is through the Cornell Lab of Ornithology and the information that people upload to that app while they're birding. Not only does it help them understand what bird they're seeing or hearing, but it adds that to the, the worldwide database that the Cornell Lab of Ornithology uses to measure shorebird and habitat health over time. Um, the same thing that happens with our fungus festival, we do iNaturalist as, um, as a citizen science opportunity through that. But then there's also, we partner with a lot of community groups to try to provide fundraising opportunities during that, that are woven into those festival events, like the Pioneer Pi Social happens every year during Shorebird Festival. And that is an event that's a great fundraiser that supports that local nonprofit organization and all the work that they do to support Cordova. We also often do a, um, a bird's breakfast through the Catholic Church and sometimes a, a music camp dinner, um, where that supports the four H music camp. And not only do these events that are baked into this festival, um, provide an opportunity for those local, uh, community groups and nonprofits to do fundraising, but they provide a really unmatched, authentic, immersive experience for these guests. When these people from all over the world come to Cordova for this shorebird festival and they, you know, they see world-renowned speakers and they get to see these, you know, amazing avian aurora of birds moving around, um, that you'll never see anywhere else really on earth, um, and get to experience the, you know, the largest contiguous wetland on the Pacific coast of North America, the Copper River Delta. We ask them at the end of the event, we have them fill out a survey and say, what was your favorite part? And a lot of them pick things like the Pioneer Pi Social. Because those are just, if you think about, if you're going to go on a vacation, what are the things that are going to have the biggest impact on you? It's probably going to be the opportunities where you have time where you get to actually meet the local people and be, feel like you're really part of the local culture. And so it really elevates the experience of those visitors as well.
Yeah. Well, and those are again, all great examples and, and they show the, the synergy and all of the, the different threads in this, in this fabric that you guys are so good at, at, at weaving. I'm always, uh, inspired every time we get to visit. And so bringing it back around to what we started with now, all of these different kinds of things, all this knowledge that you have, the resources that you provide, uh, that of course requires participation, um, between the community and the chamber and the gala is, is a way to be able to do that. So let's once more go through, um, when the different things start and the location and, and the basic timeline. And then that'll probably be our big finale.
Okay. So, uh, as you said, all of those community projects that we do that are really focused on quality of life and economic development and our future-focused, those are all projects that need funding, that we don't currently have solid funding sources and it lined up for. We're always looking for grants, but we're not a 501(c)(3), we're a 501(c)(6). That's just what chambers of commerce have to be.
Yeah.
And so it does not, it makes us ineligible for lots of grants. We do apply for all the ones that we are eligible for and we get a lot of those. But we just are limited in the way that we can get funding through grants. We get great support through the city and we get support through our business memberships and sponsorships. But this is an opportunity for everyone to support this quality of life work that we do, this future-focused community vitality work that we do. Um, the Court of a Business Gala is on November 18th. It's a Saturday, it's at the Cordova Center from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. There's childcare available through a local junior Girl Scout troop. And so you can bring your kids with you to the event at the Cordova Center. You drop them off at upstairs at the education room with the Girl Scout troop. They get to have fun upstairs with all the other kids while you're downstairs at the gala, having a great time. We're going to have a, a guest chef doing an amazing meal. We're going to have business awards where we're honoring several local bits, local businesses for the inspiring work that they're doing in Cordova. We're going to have a live auction with some really incredible, um, items that you can win. And, um, other forms of entertainment will be happening. I won't give too much away about that. But, um, there's going to be a lot of great things at this event. It'll be an opportunity for local businesses to mix and mingle with corporate entities who, um, have, everybody has heard of these folks like Alaska Airlines and, and FMBA and, and, you know, others. But this is an opportunity for you to really get to know and be in the same room with them and have an opportunity to talk to them and some of our, um, le- legislative leaders who will be in attendance. Um, and this all supports the work that the chamber does. Just by buying a ticket and coming to this fun event where you can get dressed up or dressed down however you want, you're supporting the work that we do. It's $45 for a local person that's a chamber member. If you're not a chamber member, it's $60. It's still a great deal for a night like this where all of this stuff is included. Um, the childcare is, um, is a suggested donation of $20 per kiddo, um, to the Girl Scout troop, which is a great deal for three hours of childcare. And, um, that supports the great mission of the, the Girl Scouts to, um, create uh, young people of courage, confidence and character is their mission, who make the world a better place. So I think that's great. We're so happy to be able to collaborate with local groups and community groups and nonprofits and, and businesses to provide immersive experiences and excursions for people that are attending the gala. There's all this information, including links to buy tickets, is on our website at cordova-chamber.com/gala. And there is a gala pre-party called the Blue Economy Social, which happened a little earlier, 4:00 PM at the earlier, four PM at the Pioneer. And that is a separate ticket of twenty dollars that includes a microtasting of local foods and some hyper local cocktails and mocktails. And you can learn about the blue economy from the Alaska Blue Economy Center and enjoy treats from edible Alaska. So we're really excited to offer this to Cordova. It's our first time ever doing this, so we really would love your guys' support to come to this event, November eighteenth from six to nine PM.
All right. Great visit as always, Kathy. Thank you very much for uh for letting us help get the word out and we're excited for it. I hope it goes well.
Thank you so much, Jer. We really appreciate you. You're always so supportive um of the work that we do and it's just, it's great that you really get it and we're so grateful for for your support and partnership too.
That's a pleasure to do. Thank you. The Town Meeting Talk Show on KLAM with Kathy Renfelt of the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. I told you that she is informative and now you are informed. Any questions? CordovaChamber.com has the answers. And I want to express appreciation again to Cordova Wireless Communications, not only because they sponsor the show, but because of all the income that they bring into the community. And we don't have to chop anything down or cast a net or dig a hole or anything, just by being members of CTC and/or users of Cordova Wireless Communication Services. All of these outside investments that support telecommunications come our way, the tune of, last I heard, about twelve million dollars a year that circulates through our community. Please remember, if you have any ideas for a topic or a guest on this program, just let us know. We do the show on demand and are happy to put one together anytime somebody's got a good idea or when we run across a fascinating topic. Speaking of fascinating topics, the programming to which you are entitled in the ten AM hour is all on the way, delayed a bit, but still there. And until we see you again on the Town Meeting Talk Show, whenever the next one happens to be, we thank you again and wish you a very fond all the things.